Good evening, this is the zoning board of appeals. If you're here for anything else, you're in the wrong place. Let me introduce, we have Hector Velez and Will Checho, who is our first, he's our fir- it's our initial meeting here. He's a new employee, so welcome him to Chelsea. All of you know John, I'm Janice Tatarca. This is Marilyn Vega Torres, Joe Mahoney, and Hugo Perdomo. We are going, again, there's translation here. Ah, we have some little person. We're going to take first case 2024-01, 65 Harvard Street, Elsino Gaspar Nito and Catherine Reyes for special permit seeking approval for off-street parking, which does not meet the requirement of being within five feet from the side yard. We should have taken the other one first. You know, I'm gonna actually, I'm going to change my mind, since we have so many people here, we're going to instead go to the church first. We're going to go to 2024-02, 10 Wesley, Wesley, Wesley Street, Jose M Sanchez, for special permit seeking approval to establish the church at the address below and to, oh, the dress here, and to create and establish additional parking at 19 Clyde Street, a property held in common ownership and within 300 feet of the church. The petition fails to meet the requirements of the city of Chelsea ordinance for being within five feet from a side or rear property line, nor in the required front yard setback. Additionally, the proposed outdoor additional parking locations failed to meet all of the aforementioned requirements, and the interior parking spaces do not meet zoning requirements, as the ordinance does not recognize tandem parking. In addition, the proposed parking plan does not contain the required 24-foot access width at all aisles. This is, looking for a special permit, so this is the first time we'll hear it, which means we will not be deciding this today. Instead, it will go to the planning board on March 26th, and back here on April 9th. And everybody will have the opportunity to speak when I open it up to the public. So can you please introduce yourselves and please present your project to us?
Please speak into the microphone.
Oh yes, please, thank you, John. Speak into the microphone.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members.
Excuse me, excuse me. Might be easier if you take that microphone, you can walk around if you so desire.
It's easier on your back, too.
Good idea. If we can hear you a lot clearer.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam, Madam Chair and Board Members. My name is Thomas Curran, I'm representing the church. Here with me is the applicant Pastor Jose Sanchez of the Ministerio Internacional Cristal de Vívee Church. What we're here for is, is relief, primarily for parking, and we're asking for a special permit for that parking relief. The project is, has, has changed over the past three years.
I want to interrupt one second. If anybody wishes to speak on this petition, please sign in, or if you speak at all today, sign in with your name and address. If you just want to listen, you don't have to sign in, okay? But if you're just here to listen, you don't have to sign in.
I'm sorry.
Certainly. And thank you for telling them, please sit.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, no, that's, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And as, as I, as I mentioned, Madam Chair, the project was originally designed for just this parcel here, and at, at the assistance of ISD, having issue with not enough parking for the building load, even though we thought it would be sufficient for the use. The church bought this property here, that connects it, so it's, it's, and there's, there's, this is the property line here. There, it's just, it's just dirt and asphalt driveway right up till the backside of this house. So redrawn provides for 21 outdoor parking spots, and there is, if we go to the interior, we have proposed parking garage in here for 21 interior, I'm sorry, 27 exterior, 21 interior. So with, with our building load, as calculated pursuant to the billing ordinances, we have a load of 139 people. That means we need 144, I'm sorry, we had, we have 144 parking spots.
According to, I just been told by Mr. DePree that in fact, there is no requirement. You have met the parking, the requirement for parking amount.
Yes, yes.
So that's not, there's no longer a special permit requirement.
But we have a couple issues with, with a couple of the, small car number 10 is, is too close to lot line, the small car 1, 2, and 3, these are, this is the, the entrance to the building, and we have handicapped entrance here with handicapped spots, but there's also a window on, on this side of the building, so that's, that's an issue. And we may need relief on this side because this is, this is an existing driveway for our 19 Clyde Street, but we want to park tandem cars here, so we get 27 spots. And of course, we have the interior garage, so we have the, we're seeking some relief for our parking spots being too close to the lot lines, our, our pathways not quite 24. This, this is, this is close, but the, we're, we're short on a couple of these pathways. This is fine here. And of course, the interior parking, the 21 spots, is tandem parking. And so we need relief for the tandem parking, so we can have the, the interior spots. I will note that the, the plan is to have, have live valets at all times during, when services, the services are going to be on the weekends, so that's when this garage is going to be used, if, if at all, for overflow parking, and so we'll have 24-hour valet parking when, when the service is, is being conducted. And there's, and you'll see in the plans, there's a valet office inside there. So that's the relief that we're seeking, and we believe it's appropriate, and it's, it should be approved under the conditions to consider special permits.
And John, let me clarify, all special permit requirements, anything that we're looking for is parking related, other than the major site plan review?
Yeah, the only one that is vaguely not, well, vaguely parking related is any interior, the building, any building used for interior parking has to meet the dimensional regulations. However, since it's in the parking section, the relief is by special permit, not variance.
It's easier for you. Do we have any questions before I open it up to the public? Can you clarify when you're going to have services? When will there be services?
The services are Saturday?
Just for the record, please say your name and address.
Yeah, Saturday, Sunday is 4 o'clock, and Saturday is in the afternoon about, I go pray about 10 o'clock.
Please say your name.
It's only two hours, I pray that Saturday.
Say your name, please. Say nombre.
My name Jose Sanchez, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's my vision is, you know, to, to do and then something for the young kid, you know, that's what I be here and try to, to go through with the church, and I want to get something for the parking, you know, and help with the kid now.
Will there be any use of the facilities on, during the week?
Only Tuesday, I do, he's doing, he come in the studio, the young kid for music, but only maybe 30 people, 20 kids.
So it's not a service?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And Friday, I do on a 7 o'clock, it's only 7 to, 2 hours, too. It's only church.
7:00 at night or 7:00 during the day?
7:00 to, to night sometime.
At night?
Yeah.
And that's a service?
There's nobody there, you know.
But that's another service that you have?
Yeah.
So you have services, you have, you have a get-together on Tuesdays, you said, and then you have services on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Friday night?
The special day when they got a full service, it's only Saturday night, at 10 o'clock to, to, you know, to come and pray. And then Sunday is the 4 o'clock to 7, 6, 7.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before I open it up? Okay, so I'm gonna open this, John, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I have questions about your revised site plan. Specifically, where you're showing the traffic aisle by space number 11? On the Revere Beach parking lot side? It shows as 20 feet, 4 and 1/2 inches from curb to sidewalk, but there's a fence there, so you don't have that 20, 20 feet, 4 and 1/2 inches. Are you proposing to demolish the fence? The plan show, the plan shows what appears to be a fence.
No, we'll, we'll, we will have a, we will have a fence, that's right up to the fence. So we will have a, a fence blocking this, this off from, so that, so that there's no headlights going on.
So you're gonna move the fence, then? Because your plan's showing the width of the drive aisle from curb line to back a sidewalk, and the fence is set back probably at least 2 feet. So you, so you won't have the 20 feet, you'll only have about 18?
Right. We'll, we'll, we'll have the fence on, right up at the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we have to re, that, that's a chain link fence, so we have to, we have to have a.
Yeah, it's just, it's just that you showed it on the plan this way, and I just want to understand what the site plan's gonna be. And when you go to the planning board in two weeks, they're gonna do site plan review, and we're gonna ask the same question.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
And the fences that abut 15 Clyde Street, are those also chain link fence, or are those solid?
This is, this is solid all the way around.
No, the, the, but are 15 Clyde Street?
Oh, okay. That, that will be solid.
Okay, so you'll put a solid fence there?
Yes.
I can leave it open because my neighbor is, is Spanish guy.
You gotta talk into the microphone.
Yeah, I can, I, I wanna leave it in open, you know, in case, you know, somebody, I know, I know, I think I don't need to use it, but I leave it in open for you once, you know.
Yeah, well, the goal here is just-
It's good to leave it in open for me, you know, my neighbor is from my country, too. He told me, leave it like this, okay, you know.
But the goal here is just to make sure that cars parking there are not shining onto the, above his property.
Nobody can park it there anyway, so, that's fine.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Marilyn.
I have a couple of questions. How many valets are you gonna have during the services, live valets?
We're gonna have 3.
3, 3 live valets, okay. And do you have like a traffic plan for entering and exiting the parking area?
Well, they'll, they'll, they'll be exiting out, and it will, if we have to move, move 2 cars, so there, there's 3 cars, so if you have to move 2, we'll just back out, and then the car will exit, and then they'll go back in.
But everybody will enter one, on one street?
Yes.
Everybody will enter on one street, exit on one street?
Exit.
The same street or a different street?
Same street.
Okay.
That's where it is now. People enter onto the street, but we won't be parking on the street, we'll be going into the garage.
Correct.
And then out.
Hugo?
Do you have any buses coming to, to park on the street?
No.
No, okay. So the church owns 19?
Yes.
That dumpster, how's, how's getting out, how the trash is getting out? If you put in the dumpster by number 25 spot, how that dumpsters move? How you guys gonna move that dumpster when the trash day? A truck will get in, or it will roll out?
Yeah. It just, it, it, the truck will come in and take it out.
So the, the driveway, 19 and 50, is that shared driveway, or just, it's just for 19?
These, it's a shared driveway, because the, the owner owns this whole L, for instance, and these cars won't be parked there when they, when they empty the dumpster. It'll be, it, it, the parking lot will be empty, and the truck will go in, empty it, and come out, just like they do when it was over here.
You say, and the plan says you're gonna have 21 vehicles parked in the garage? 21?
Yes.
Don't we need a layout for, to see that, no?
I'm sorry, the zoning permits for parking interior, as long as the, the building meets dimensional regulations, and, or gets a special permit relief for it. The fire department is requiring that to be sprinkled.
Yes.
And that will be used only if there's no room on the outside, correct?
That's correct. That's overflow parking.
Any other questions? Okay, so I'm gonna open this up to the public, and there are clearly a lot of people who want to speak about this. So when you come up, speak in the microphone, which he's gonna put back there, give your name and address, and everybody gets no more than 5 minutes, because there's a lot of people here. And if you want to just repeat what somebody else said earlier, just said, I agree with them, so we don't, so, you know, or if you disagree, you say, whatever you want. But, and again, everybody is entitled to speak, but let's just try to keep it to 5 minutes, so we can all get home before tomorrow. Okay, you get, you need the, you've got the mic? There you go. Sir?
La visión que tengo para este, para Chelsea's, la verdad tengo, viene de 15 años los Estados Unidos. The vision that I have for Chelsea is coming from 15 years of being in the United States.
Give us a name and address first, please.
My name Jose Sanchez.
And your address, please.
173 2th Street, Everell.
Thank you.
And, okay. Um, bueno, you know, I come and with a, I come and with, I got 15 years old in Cambridge, I lived for 20 years, and, and that time, when I come and, I, I don't know how to live in the United States, but I started to see what I do in the United States. Now I got 40 years in the United States. And the, and the time I come into, in the United States, I got a one, in 2010, I have a cancer, and I have one kidney, because I'm in coma. So, and then later, I converse, and we are Christian, to help with the people, because somebody helped me when I got a 2-year fight with the cancer. So my vision is to help with the young kid and the people, and draw the, you know, the community. That's what I, my vision is, to put the power to help and to the people and United States immigrants. And then my vision, I put everything, my economic now, is because I want to do transformation, the vision in Chelsea. Before in Chelsea, it very difficult to Spanish people living, you remember maybe in that time, everybody fight with the people here. But now, the story, I want to change the story in this, in Chelsea. I want a Chelsea, to get somebody take care, the young kid, you know, to come in and transformation everything different, like, the people use a drug, and the people, the, the little kid, I want to use it and put it in music, I want to put it in, or the people use a drug restoration. That's what I want to do in Chelsea. So Chelsea, he needed somebody got a power to do that, because I do this because somebody helped me, and I want to do that. That's what my heart is, to do this for Chelsea. It's not easy for me, but it's not difficult for you, everybody go together, you understand? See, everybody be together, and Chelsea, and it's big story. That's what the mayor, the Maria called me, he told me, I say, I don't want you live in the, the city in Everell. But I say, God he put to me and Chelsea, what I can do, you know? But he like it, he wanted help to me to get that project over there. But I, I think you can help to me, guys, to get this vision for Chelsea, to do something good, you know? I want to help with the people. I, I know a lot of people in Chelsea, he needed the young 18, 19, I know he use, he, he drinking, and he do that, but I want to do something like a beautiful vision for this kid, help with everybody. You see there a lot of kid here now? Yeah, and this kid, he's so happy, because what I do is to, to get better studio in a school. I do a lot of stuff now for the kid, so everybody happy what I do, and I need your help to get this vision in Chelsea. That's why I be here, and I appreciate if you do that. You know, it's difficult, I sell my house for this project. I sell my house and spent a lot of money for 3 years now, for keeping this building. It's not easy for me, but if I working together in United States, the opportunity for the kid to super action very well, he understand, somebody helped me, I want to do the same thing. That's why I be here. When I come into my country, El Salvador, it's very difficult, because the gangas, I don't want to stay here before. You know in the 80s? My family dead, when somebody fight. I don't want this country like that, I want something nice. Now Bukele, he do something different. That's what I want to do for this city, no kind, no coming in the same thing like in my country, you understand? Everybody had to fight with this. That's why I be here. And thank you for your time, guys. Trust me, it's not easy, but I know, I don't want it to happen with the kid in United States, the same thing in my country. Thank you, this is my time, and I think it's enough, and I need your help, guys. That's all.
Thank you, thank you. Is, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, come on up, give your name and address.
My name is Jason Villanueva. I used to live at Chelsea when I was younger.
Your address?
67 Howard Street, it's in Revere. I never found out about this church to my parents, I never believed in God or anything, and I agree with pastor, with my pastor. I believe that there can be a change in Chelsea. They can lower the death rates in Chelsea, the depression with people that have, with suicidal thoughts. I was one of those people, I had depression, I had suicidal thoughts, I wanted to kill myself, I wanted to kill my own parents, so I went to church, and I knew that there was a God, and he truly changed my life. The reason why I think that we should allow this building to come, because I believe that it can change lives in Chelsea. I believe that the gangs in there, they can change. Everybody has a chance in this world, I believe everybody can change. It's not like every other religion. This church is not about religion, it's not about doing things in order to be better, it's in order to have a relationship with Christ. Having a relationship with Christ, I never knew what that truly meant, but what that meant to me, what that meant, well, having a relationship with Christ, that helps you grow spiritually, that helps you change your mindset, and it has healed me from depression, has healed me with many things. I suffered so much, but meeting pastor in this church has helped me so much, and I believe this can do with Chelsea and this country as well. If you allow us to have this in this, have this building, you'll see the biggest change in Chelsea, it will be historical, and I know that God will permit it, permit it. I know that it will change everyone's lives. I don't know if you, you guys are here struggling with depression and all that, but the same way that Christ has changed me, I believe Christ can change you guys. And I know it's not by emotion, I feel it within my spirit. I know where God has taken out me from, and where this church is not like any other church. I've been to different churches, and they all talk about religion, they all talk about acts, but this church saves you from depression. There's so many testimonies that people have been through, that God has taken out of them. Recently, my friend came back, and the way she came back from the world, she said, the drugs, the alcohol, everything, she said, it's not worth it. Coming to Christ and following Christ is far worth it, and following Him. What I believe, I really believe, give us a chance, and you'll see the biggest change in Chelsea, you'll see a change within everything. Yeah, what I say, just give us a chance, you'll see the change within us. God bless you.
Thank you. Okay, okay, guys, I, I know, I think it's wonderful what they're saying, but we don't need to applaud for everyone, okay? It's, I, it's okay, and what they're saying is very moving, and I appreciate it. So, your name and address, please.
My name is Doug Ortiz, and I live, my address is 31 Lambert, Chelsea. And it's a pleasure, God bless everyone. It's a pleasure to meet you the first time, and please, thank God, can I say in Spanish?
Yes, and he'll, and he'll translate for us.
Gracias a Dios que nos ha puesto en esta ciudad. El amor por la juventud. Tenemos muchos jóvenes que salieron de las gangas, que salieron de las drogas. Jóvenes restaurados.
Now let him, wait.
Yeah, thank God, actually, to be here in this place in Chelsea. We have kids, actually, youth people, actually, that came from drugs and guns.
Me gusta el evangelismo. Yo ando en las calles y veo la juventud en las calles. Espe, en especial Ciudad de Chelsea, 7, 8 de la noche. Mucha gente no camina por las calles, tiene miedo. Y nosotros hemos rescatado jóvenes de la calle, que ahora tienen una vida diferente. Donde se va a abrir esa iglesia, mataron una jovencita de 15, 16 años. Eso no queremos en nuestra juventud, queremos rescatar la juventud.
I like evangelism. I'm up in the street, and I see the youth people, actually, out there, 7 and 8 o'clock at night. We have a rescue, kids from being on, on guns and out there, and we don't want that actually to happen here in Chelsea anymore.
Y dígale al joven que mataron aquí en la iglesia.
Exactly, actually, what that building's gonna be, what it is, actually, they killed a person, or they killed a, a, a female there in that spot.
El que mataron en la 107 era de la iglesia. Un joven de la iglesia vino a un cumpleaños aquí en Chelsea. Un sábado, no regresó. Salió en News, 7 News, en 7 News. Lo encontraron en la Route 1A, 107. Queremos, nosotros estamos preparando los niños, los jóvenes, que tengo una mentalidad diferente.
Yeah, a person, actually, that came to a party in Chelsea, was found in 107, was killed there. What we doing right now is preparation, actually, kids and young people.
Queremos una Chelsea mucho mejor. Massachusetts, Dios bendijo Massachusetts, trayendo el evangelio a Massachusetts. Y ahora Dios ha sembrado en nuestro corazón, que el evangelio se siga levantando, no solo Massachusetts, en todo, no solo Chelsea, en todo Massachusetts.
God bless Chelsea, actually, the evangelism came here in Massachusetts, God bless Massachusetts and Chelsea.
La decisión está en ustedes. Lo dejan, Chelsea va a ser diferente, va a ser una Chelsea transformada, va a ser una Chelsea de paz. Van a caminar a las 8 de la noche con más tranquilidad. Van a caminar a las ocho de la noche con más tranquilidad, más confiado. Por qué? Porque Dios lo va a hacer. Con la ayuda de usted y con la ayuda de Dios, Chelsea va a ser diferente.
So the decision is in your hands actually. Chelsea will be different. We gonna make a better actually city and it's gonna be transformed with the help of you guys.
Muchísimas gracias, que Dios me les bendiga mucho.
Thank you so much, God bless you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Capilonueva. I live, I reside in Revere, sixty-seven Howard Street. Um, I came to this country when I was ten years. So I grew up in Chelsea, I went to school in Chelsea, I went to high school in Chelsea. So I know what, I love Chelsea and I want, I want a better future for Chelsea. Uh, you saw that li- the guy, the, the young man that came here, that's my son. So he's Jason, my son. I went through a lot with Jason when he was young age. He started doing drugs. As a mom, he hurt me. As a mom, I was confused, I didn't know what to do until I met Pastor Sanchez. He's a blessing to my family. He's a blessing to all my family. Why? He has a vision to restore families. That vision came through in my life. I see how God changed my family. I see now how God changed my son. As a mother seeing a young child, a young son like age twelve, thirteen in drugs, smoking weed, it's not easy as a mom. But I came to Christ, I came to this church and now I see that, the man that he's becoming, that with that mind, you saw him how he talks, I'm proud. But how? Because I met Pastor Sanchez, I went to this church. This church has a huge vision. So if you guys let us open this church, I know something great God is gonna do in Chelsea. Cuz it's so sad how young men are getting killed. Like, like this guy, he was twenty-one, that he got killed. It was so sad seeing this family destroyed, that seeing that this man, that this guy got killed. It's as a mom, I don't wanna lose my child. As a mom, I'm happy now that I see what God did with us. I'm happy, so I'm just letting you guys know, it's a blessing. This church is different. This church has a vision. This church is not like, is not like the other churches. The Pastor Sanchez wants to help those youth that's struggling with drugs. I work in America field. I work with youth, I work with teenagers and I see now that youth are struggling with depression. They're doing drugs and as a church, we wanna help those in need. We wanna help them cuz I see every day how they attempt to kill themselves. I see how they struggle with depression and what do, what do they do? Give medicine. We don't offer medicine. We, all we offer to come to Christ and he will do everything. Thank you.
Thank you. That's okay, that was pretty good. She can clap, it's alright, that was good.
Hello, my name is Brian Martinez. I live on one twenty Sherliffe Street. Um, I moved to Chelsea about seven years ago. Um, when I moved to this city, all I would hear is that Chelsea was a dangerous city, that it was the word that people use now that describe the youth as ghetto and that really hurts my heart hearing that people say Chelsea is dangerous and ghetto. And I thank God that I came back to God's path cuz I was during the COVID pandemic, I left God's path because I didn't wanna do nothing with God until I met my pastor, Pastor Sanchez, who has, who has been helping me and my family, helping me and my family a lot. I have a dad who struggles with, who struggles with occultism and it's not easy for me as a seventy-year-old son, trying to help my own father when he doesn't want to help. And I thank God for putting pastor in my, in my path, that I'm back in God's path and it's been different and I know that God is gonna change my family. And one thing that this church has helped like a lot is that no matter what, they, they preach to us the truth. The truth is that we, we, we just have to, you know, follow God's word and the day when he comes back, that's when we're gonna have, we're gonna be, we're gonna have enjoyment, no more sadness, no more depression and nothing. I see a lot of youth in my school, at Chelsea High School, doing drugs, have depression. They, they smoke, they do, they do whatever they want. There's kids in school that are in gangs that they, they try to act like they own Chelsea. And if you let this, if you let the church open, youth can come in and ask for that help, ask for God to change them. Cuz that's, that's what us youth, our youth group in the church, our goal is to have more than at least eighty youth in God's path cuz we want them to be changed, we want them, we want them to be saved. And I just, I thank God for everything that he's trying to do in my life and I'm hoping that God touches your hearts, that you can open this church because I love being in this ministry and I also sing and I sing to God. I praise him because that's the way that we do and that's another way youth can learn to praise God and ask for, for help no matter what they're going through. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, good evening, my name is Francisco Bardales. My address is thirty Pink and Road, Lynn, New Hampshire. You might think, what is this guy doing here? He's from New Hampshire, right? I became a member of the church about six years ago. I used to live in Lynn, bought a house in New Hampshire and there's many churches around, but when you find something special in a place, you wanna stay there, right? That's a place that I was able to see my three kids and my wife go there. We come here, we come to our church now every Friday and Sunday from New Hampshire. Takes an hour and a half drive, but we do it because we know that the goal that the church has for this community, the Spanish community in general, is something that we wanna get across to other people. I know there's many churches in Chelsea and you might think, just another church, right? Another Hispanic church in town, but there's a lot of people out there that don't know about Jesus. And that's our goal as Spanish kids and the youth. I mean, I came here as a seventeen-year-old kid. I had to make my own decisions, right? I decided to take the right path cuz I stay in church. There was a pastor there behind me, there was people in church behind me that helped me make the right decisions. I was able to go to college. How many Spanish kids goes to college nowadays? Very few. Why? Because there's no people behind them pushing them to take the next step. You'll see the Asian community get ahead, you see the Hindus community get ahead. The Spanish community, they always gonna be laborers, right? That's what people see. We want to change the mentality in Chelsea. We want our youth from church to take the next step. Our parents didn't have the opportunity to go to college. We want our kids to go to college. I want my kids to take the next step. I don't want them to stay in the same level. I want my kids to be sitting at that bench one day. And that's what we hear, that's what we asking for. You know, the parking issue, I, I get it. I'm in the zoning board myself in New Hampshire for my town. But we not offering a strip club, we not offering, you know, weed dispensary. We offering a church, a place that people can be healed, appeal, a place that people can be restored their lives, their marriages can come together. There's a lot of people in our church, you know, the father in one place, the mother in another place, the kids, you know, going through that conflict. We don't like that. I'm a family person, you know, I like to be around my kids and I think that's what, that's another goal that our church is trying to get across, to bring families together. The divorce rate is higher than ever before. And guess what? If my kids see me get divorced, guess what? They're gonna follow me, they're gonna do what I do, right? So it's our job, I think, as, you know, the younger generation, to give a good example to our kids and I think having the church there, it's a prime location. There's a liquor store next to us, right? What can happen next door? Another liquor store, another seven eleven, another dispensary. I wish I live in the community to be in favor of this project. Unfortunately, I don't live in the community, but I don't see any harm to the neighbors around. I don't see any harm to people that live next door, there's other businesses around. What do you prefer? A liquor store or a church? There's enough parking with the parking garage inside the building. There's enough parking outside. You know, we have a lay parking. We're not gonna be affecting the neighborhood. We're gonna have enough parking. Myself, my wife and three kids, it's five people in one car. We don't take three cars. And we, we usually bring two more people, so we have a mini event. We have seven people in one car. So if you do the math, you know, it's a big building, I get it. And you look at the numbers and you have to look at the numbers. I have an engineering degree and I, you know, I do numbers too. But in reality, I think we have to be honest and be reasonable with ourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. You guys have been very organized about this, I really appreciate it.
Muy buenas tardes.
Please, hello.
Mi nombre es Javier Ramos. Soy, trabajo por cinco, ayudo por cinco años al ministerio del pastor José Sanchez con los jóvenes y con los niños y soy pastor de música de la iglesia.
Yeah, been helping out the church for five years and I also actually...
Do we have a name and address, please?
For her, sorry.
It's okay.
Uno, siete, tres, Taylor Street, Malden.
No, now you can go, okay.
Yeah, been with the church for five years actually with the pastor here and also I'm a pastor and I teach music to the kids.
Algo que yo he visto alrededor del mundo entero es que hay muchos jóvenes que mueren por una enfermedad que es la depresión. Y esa enfermedad llamada depresión mata a personas, a miles de personas por un segundo en este mundo.
I haven't seen a illness around the world that name is depression and that kills a lot of people. It kills about one, a, a, a young person per minute.
La visión de esta, de este ministerio es poder restaurar a las familias y a los jóvenes. Es una visión expandida que Dios le ha dado a nuestro pastor para poder abrir campo en esta ciudad.
It's actually to establish between the families and the kids and that's haven't been allowed to the pastor to build in this church.
Sé que no podemos entrar a ese lugar ya de hace dos años porque no tenemos la autoridad como ustedes la tienen. Y creo de que si trabajamos juntos en esta ciudad para poder ayudar a las familias y a los jóvenes sería una ciudad exitosa porque muchos jóvenes están muriendo debajo de los puentes en drogas, alcohol y prostitución.
We, uh, I know, we haven't been able to be in that building for, for two years now and I know actually we can help a lot of people. Uh, youth actually, they, 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 they dying actually under the bridges and stuff.
No es una discoteca que se va a abrir. No es un punto de venta de drogas que se va a abrir. Es una iglesia en la cual ayudará a nuestras familias, a las familias de afuera y a toda la ciudad de Bosso.
It's not a discotheque we gonna open. It's not gonna be the spot to sell drugs. It's gonna be a place that gonna help the family and everybody around.
Si Dios nos ha dado ese lugar en medio de la pandemia, que la pandemia fue un caos, es con un propósito para poder evitar ese lugar.
If God ever gave us that place right in the middle of a pandemic, it's for a purpose.
Será un lugar donde vamos a poder ayudar a muchas personas. Ayudaremos a la ciudad de Chelsea y si Dios nos puso en ese lugar, es porque queremos ayudar a muchas familias.
Uh, God put us in this place, we gonna be able to help a lot of people in Chelsea and a lot of families around.
Solo queremos una, solo queremos una ayuda y la ayuda está en ustedes. Queremos que ustedes nos ayuden a nosotros para poder trabajar en unidad con esta ciudad.
Only we need a help and the help is in your hands. We just wanna to work as a unity and make this happen.
Hay un problema en las escuelas, muchos jóvenes portando armas, matando a jóvenes entre jóvenes y son cosas que no se van a poder solucionar de, de un día a otro, pero sé que el, el dador de la vida que es Dios puede solucionar las cosas.
It's been a lot of problems in the schools where kids are carrying weapons and killing each other. And I know actually the only way we can through this is with gas help.
Nuestra visión es poder ayudarnos unos con otros, que es el amor de Dios. Gracias.
A goal to help each other, which is to love a God. Thank you.
Pastor Sanchez, if you'd like to sit down, you can, you don't have to stand up. You can sit down.
My name is Marvin Villanueva and I live in Sagus, twelve, twelve Hoard Drive. I used to live in Chelsea. I moved like four years ago. I have a family, I have three, three kids. And the reason I, I moved from Chelsea was cuz I, I didn't like what was going on in Chelsea. I went to, I, I, I came in this country nineteen, nineteen ninety-three. I went to Chelsea High. I did awesome, I never missed a day of school. But I did sports, so now I'm a businessman and, uh, we still have a restaurant here in Chelsea. I don't know if you heard of Tijuana Restaurant? We still have, we have, we still have that restaurant. We have a, another one in East Boston right now, that's where I'm at right now. And sometimes, you know, when I, cuz I drop people here in Chelsea. The other, the other time I had a employee that works for me and she, she, she got scared coming from work at twelve at night. She, 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 she went back to work and telling me that she was scared for her life. And I was like, why? See, Chelsea, I, I live in Chelsea all my life. I told her how this happened, but then I said, she starts telling me like, the person started chasing her. So the only thing she did was run away to a place that was open. And then, uh, what I, I've, I've been in church for two years and I, what I think, you know, the reason I took my kids from Chelsea was like, I don't want the environment that I, that I used to see, that I used to hear. But now that I'm in church, I, my mind has changed. I wanna get back to the community. So, you know, sometimes, you know, as a businessman, you want, having money, you want, you wanna buy everything, but life is not like that. So I'm here to support my pastor. He has changed, he, I restored my family. I was, like, three years ago, I was about to divorce my wife, but since my, since, by, by his help, my, my family has been restored. I work with my kids, I give them love. So that's why we here, that's, everyone's here too, cuz we, we love the pastor. So I think, you know, it's, it's in your hands for you guys to give us, you know, the green light. I don't see a problem, why, you know, parking should be a problem. You know, that's like, you know, sometimes, you know, money doesn't buy everything in life. So and I, I see like he can probably make a profit of the building, but that's not, that's not what God wants. So he wants God to help Chelsea too. So thank you for the time and I'm here to support my pastor.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Regina Ortiz. I live in thirty-one Lambert Ave in Chelsea. And honestly, when I heard the news, they gonna open a church over there, I got kinda excited. And I was thinking when I was sat down over there, listening to everyone, what they say. And I know already, you already, deep in your heart, you already know the answer, which is good, which is not. And I was thinking like, if you guys do the right decision, would be great. But also if you do the wrong decision, who knows what's gonna happen? But listen to them, it's a lot of young kids. I live in Chelsea since nineteen ninety-one. I see a lot of things and, um, we all wish to have a nice dream, which is a house. I own the house. But I see a lot of young kids, they need somebody to help them out and I work with them, I play soccer and I deal with them. And, uh, and I talk to them about it. The only way for you to stay away from drugs, cuz young kids, you, you can see it. Sometimes it breaks my heart, I hear the story about the kid in the one oh seven. When I saw in the news, even when I spoke in the news, I cry cuz it break my heart, my heart when a kid die. And if we, we contribute to help them out and bring them out out of whatever wrong thing they doing it, that will be awesome. And like I said, it will be nice if all the community, we work together. Cuz at the same time, what I think it is the purpose to open this church over there is to work with the community. The community, it needs help, not only the city whole. The city whole cannot do everything by themselves. We need to work together. Cuz if we, we work together, we're more powerful. We're gonna make Chelsea better. At the same time, that's what we all need, to have secure the streets. You can walk around at one o'clock on the, on the street. Even now, I, I walk around the street, but it's better than nineteen ninety-one. And, and that time it was horrible. It made me run from over here, from behind this building. I was running all the way to the police station cuz bunch of guy were chasing me for the money. It's horrible. But things changed. The police doing amazing job, but they... The police doing amazing job, but they not gonna do it themselves. They need somebody to help them out. And the vision they have, to put the families together, I think that's the best. Because right now, if you can see a couple, they can get married right now, and three months later, they already divorced. They try to avoid that. They want the kids grow up with their parents. I think that's a good vision. And I'm excited because they come next to my house. I got a 20-year-old kid. He quit already college. He don't want to go to college. And I talked to him, what do you want in life? And it makes me like really worry about it. Because I come all the way from down. And God bless me, and what I am right now is because the grace of God. But I work with my kid. I tell him, what do you want in life? You gotta do something. And even for me, it's tough for him to bring him to like, we talk about God. He says, nothing but play and the games on the computer. But at least he stay home. But other kids on the street, you can see like 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, walking around. And the next day, they go to the high school, they barely sleep. They don't do the job. That's right, like the other guy says, that right now, a lot of kids, they don't go to college. They just go to high school. They barely finish sometime high school. Or they don't finish. Like my nephew, he don't finish high school. He just want to work and make money. That's it. And that is the purpose. I like the vision of the pastor, because he want to bring families together. It's not only that. He want to work with the community. So what I said is, like I said before, God knows your decision. And the perfect time is you guys gonna tell us. So God bless you all, and think about it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jefferson Lemus. I live at 31 Lambert. And I've been living in Chelsea for seven years. I know I look a little old, but I'm actually only 18. I grew up in Chelsea, and when I first started coming to this church, it changed me a lot. I'm gonna give you guys testimony, because, you know, you guys see everybody coming up and talking about, we want to switch, we want to change the youth, we want to give them vision and everything. But what is good, what is good, all that talk, if there is no examples of it? And I am one example of that vision and that they have. Actually, pastor here, he is like a father figure to me. He came into my life in a moment where I was really lost. I came here to middle school, the right middle school, and I got involved with a lot of gang friends. They were involved in a lot of gangs. I got involved with a lot of bad stuff, a lot of bad people. And, you know, if I kept on going the way I was going, I was definitely gonna end up in jail or dead. That's the sad truth. They helped me change my vision. When I came to church, at first I hated it. I absolutely hated it. But God put something into my heart, and he changed my life. Not only just God himself, but he put the people in the church, you know? It's hard growing up and being rejected all the time. When I was young, I got made fun of a lot for being fat, overweight. I got bullied, you know? In school, I would show up to school and I would be depressed. I would go home and want to kill myself. I hated my mother. There were so many things that were going on in school. And when I came to church, something changed in me. And, you know, it's great to have these type of people like pastor that are not willing to judge you or coming to judge you, but they're coming to help you. You know, it takes a lot for me to say where I am now. Thanks to their help from them and the guidance from the Lord, I'm successful now, you know? I didn't have a vision back then on what I wanted to do in my life. And to be honest, if I even had a vision, I don't think I would be alive any further. It's sad to see because we just saw one of our members from our church die to a similar instance. And, you know, I'm grateful that they helped me change and they gave me a vision in my life, because I wouldn't be where I am now. Now, you see us talking about helping the youth and everything, and, you know, I want to give back to my community. I want to give back to the future of this generation. I'm actually currently teaching, and I'm in charge of the ministry of the children. And one big blessing from, you know, teaching the children is, you know, when I was in their position, I wish I had someone to teach me the good, to tell me that there's someone there who loves me, someone who's gonna help me, you know? Guide me, give me good advice, you know? When I was young, all my friends would tell me to go do drugs or, you know, go do things that, what are they gonna do good for me? What are they gonna help me in my future, you know? People, when you're young, they tell you, oh, go get ladies or stuff like that. You know, they tell you stuff that doesn't edify, edify you or help you grow. But in the church, they taught me everything I needed, you know? They didn't tell me, oh, here, go smoke to relieve the depression, or go do this. They told me, follow God. They gave me a vision. They helped me build. And, you know, it's truly amazing to see that the church is able to do stuff like this. A lot of people talk bad, say that the church is coming with bad faith and that we come to judge. We do not come to judge. We do not come to condemn, because the Lord Jesus Christ did not condemn us. So we do not come here for evil. We do not bring anything against. We want to help. We don't want to show hatred or say that people are doing the wrong for sinning. We want to show them, show them the love that Jesus Christ showed us. I myself want to show other people the love that I received, and I want to reflect that on other people, you know? But I can't do it if I have no church here in Chelsea, you know? I want to help the community that I grew up in, that changed my life. And, you know, I do want to work, you know, probably in the city hall later on. I'm pursuing a future in HVAC, thanks to the Lord. He's given me everything I have. And, you know, I want to help my community. But one of the things is, this church would really help us out. And it's gonna change the way that we see our youth, you know? I see, and I still hang out with a lot of my buddies from here, from Chelsea. I see a lot of them going through a lot. Most of them have actually gone to our church, and, you know, they're starting, they're starting a different life. And it's good to see, not only that it was able to help me, but it's able to help hundreds of others, and it will keep helping people and families in our community, if you guys allow us this opportunity. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on.
Good evening. My name is Mari Solartez. I live in 31 Lambert Avenue in Chelsea. I have been living in Chelsea for, I will say, more than 20 years now. And I'm so proud to live in Chelsea, but sometimes I'm very depressed to live in Chelsea. Why? Because it's a lot of drugs. Everything is legal. And I am the mother of 20-year-old son. And all the time that he's out, I'm scared. And I don't want to be scared. I don't want my son to die. Because I have friends who die because they just went to a party, and they die. And I don't want something like that happen to my own son or my own daughter. I have an eight-year-old daughter as well. And I don't want these things happen. And I want to change for Chelsea. I want you guys to give us an opportunity to open this church. I live in Chelsea, and I'm a part of the church as well. And I met this great pastor when I have a big process in my life. I lost a cousin. She had cancer. And I met him when she was dying. And God healed my heart. God changed my life since I met this guy, since I met this church. Because I was out drinking, dancing. I didn't, I didn't have peace on my soul. I was close to get divorced. And when I met this pastor, God changed my life. God changed my future. Now, I'm in a medical field as medical assistant. I work at Mas General Hospital. And I love to help patients. I love to help people. And I want to help our community, our kids, our teenagers, because they are the future of this country. I don't want people to think that we are bad people. Latinos, we are not bad people. We want to change the view of Americans. The American dream is not just come to this, to this country to work. It's to change people views that we have big hearts. We want to open our hearts to everybody, to help people, to help little children, people who are in drugs. It's a lot of teenagers who are in drugs right now. A lot of depressions, as everybody say. I'm agree with everybody. Because I have family, and I don't want to lose my family. As the pastor says, we lost a member of our church just because he went to a party. He came to a party to Chelsea, and somebody killed him just because he went to a party. You guys, that's not fair. Just to go to a party and being killed. And this pastor want to change everybody's life with Jesus' name. And we just want an opportunity to open this church, because it's for everyone who's needed, not just for Latinos. It's for everybody. It's welcome to come to our services. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yamsi Granados.
Could you talk a little louder, please?
My name is Yamsi Granados, and I'm from 315 Beach Street in Revere. I'm 15 years old, and the vision of my pastor is to help restore families through the Holy Spirit. And I truly believe in that, because he, this church saved my life. I was, I, at the age of 13, I didn't want any part to do in this world. And this church helped me, because I found peace and I found, I could restore myself, and I wanted peace for everyone else, because I could finally open my hearts to this world and be forgiving to this world, because I was hurt so much. And I want this church to be built, so more people can be helped. Because this, because a church is a hospital. A church heals. A church gives love, gives peace. That's what this pastor has shown me. And I want that for the rest of the, for the rest of Chelsea to see. I want Chelsea to, these youth that are in the streets, I want them to see this peace that you can get from going to this church. This, this place is to restore hearts. It's to restore minds. There is so many people, so many youth in this place right now, wanting change for their community, wanting change for Chelsea, wanting change for this church. They want growth. They want lives to be saved. That's why we're all here to support, to want a better life for Chelsea. That's all.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marvin Villanueva. I am a resident of Revere, but I lived here in Chelsea for eight years.
You still need to give me your address.
Oh, 50 Ambrose Street in Revere. I'm 15 years old. I'm currently a student in Northeast Metro Tech. And I got from school like an hour or so ago. But I really believe that, I really came, I came here just to like really support my church, because this church has been something, an impact, not only in my life, but as you see in many other lives in this place as well. I want to say, and my dad, my father, my mother used to live here as well. And they're not here currently present, but I know that they would also love for our church in Chelsea, so there can be a change in our youth and the future of America, right? And I'm here to support my pastor, because my pastor is a really like, he's an idol in my life. And I know he's a really big idol in a lot of people's lives too, because he's really, he has changed a lot of lives in this church. And currently, I'm studying for health assisting. And my pastor, he's just, I can't, I can't say what I want to say about him, but he's really a big change in this, in my life, in my family's life, in a lot of people's lives too. And I want to say, please, let this church happen. It's nothing bad. It's something that really has changed a lot of people's lives and changes a lot of people's lives every day. We have reached multiple communities and even communities out of state like Lee, New Hampshire. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. That's quite all right. What's your name?
My name is Kayla Gutierrez Calix.
And where do you live?
In Walnut Street.
You can ask your mom for help with that one, that one.
Walnut Street.
Okay, Walnut and Stroud. Okay. So what, what would you like to say?
Hi, hi everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Karen Calix. I'm living in the 1, 232.
Are you talking for her or you're? Because either you testify for you, which is, you can do. But you got to talk into the microphone and give us your name and address. But I think the young lady wants to speak first. Go ahead. What would you like to say?
Um, my parents used to be Calix, and...
Oh, I know you have a bigger voice than that. Come on. I bet you you make a lot of noise outside. Go ahead.
My parents used to be Calix, and when I was born, I was born in the church that I am right now. But my parents used to not know about God until somebody invited them to the church that we are. And pastors show my parents how to be their new version that they could be, and how they can be better in life, because my parents were always the best person that they could ever be. But pastors show them how to be brave, how to be ignorant, and how to show other people that God isn't just something that people see that is in view. He's real. You just have to let him enter into your heart.
You are very brave, and that was very well done.
Hello, my name is Cristhian Escobar. My address is 37 Union Street. Before I start, I get really nervous when I speak in English, so can I get a translator?
You absolutely may. Yes, the translator is right there. Yep, he needs you.
I'm gonna be speaking...
But you don't need to be nervous, but it's okay.
I'm gonna be speaking in Spanish, and can you translate?
And he'll translate for you, yes.
Este, mi nombre es Cristian. Este, yo he venido a este lugar porque quiero hablar por iglesia. Este, cuando era bien pequeño, yo venia con mi mamá. Yo era cristiano a la edad que yo nací. Yo fui creado en los caminos de Dios. Este, cuando yo tenía este cinco años, o por ahí la edad, yo conocía al pastor Sánchez. Y este, desde ese momento fue cuando yo comencé a conocer de Dios con mi mamá.
Okay, yeah. I'm here to speak actually for us, on behalf, for us trying to support the church. I met actually the pastor when I was five years old. I was already Christian at the time, and when I met him.
Este, cuando yo llegué, el templo era bien chiquito, no había tanta gente. Había como unos, unas seis o siete personas. Este, me acuerdo que la iglesia era detrás de un Dunkin Donuts. Este, el lugar era bien pequeño, no cabía tanta gente. Pero se sentía una, como una presencia de amor, y que la gente quería, la gente cuando entraba, les daba amor, paz, y los, este, le daban la bienvenida cuando llegaban ahí.
When I got there, actually, the church was very small. It was about six people there, was behind a Dunkin Donuts. But I noticed actually every time, everyone was coming was welcome. And I felt really fine when I came in.
Este, después de allí, este, los quedamos ahí por unos meses. Y fue cuando yo y mi mamá, este, nos salimos por un periodo de tiempo, y la iglesia se había mudado de un Dunkin Donuts, se mudó a un propio templo en Everett. Y este, ahí fue cuando el lugar había crecido, y mucha gente llegó. Y el templo crecía, crecía, y mucha gente llegaba nueva. Y este, ahí fue cuando mis papás, digo, mi mamá comenzó a servir en esa iglesia.
Yeah, the time actually after that, they move out from the place right behind Dunkin Donuts. They went to Everett. And I see a lot of, a lot of people came to the temple, and a lot of actually people started joining in. And I see a lot of, a lot of people came to the temple and a lot of actually people started joining in. And we saw with my mother actually that a lot of people was coming in.
Oh, once, I mean, desde que, este, llegamos ahí, yo era bien pequeño, creo que tenía como siete, ocho años. Y yo me acuerdo que yo no, no quería aprender de Dios porque yo no sabía qué era, este. Yo, lo que yo hacía es que yo llegaba a la iglesia, me iba a un cortito donde cuidaba a los niños y yo solo jugaba, jugaba, corría. Y cuando terminaba el servicio, yo no saludaba a nadie, solo, este, corría con los demás niños. Y yo casi no sabía nada de Dios en esa temporada.
When I got there, I was around seven or eight years old. I didn't want, uh, nothing to learn about God and everything. What I used to do, just come down there, play with the kids and everything, that's what I used to do.
Este, después de ese tiempo, mi mamá se había casado con un muchacho, con un hombre que se llamaba Nick Mendoza. Este, yo me acuerdo que la boda fue ahí mismo adentro y yo fui él, eh, la persona que tenía los dos niños. Y yo me acuerdo que en, en ese momento yo estaba bien feliz porque sentía que la, la iglesia que estaba ahí, este, quería mucho a mi mamá y ellos dejaban que ella se pudiera casar en ese lugar y que lo sintiéramos bien honorable con ellos.
Then my mother got married with a guy named David Mendoza. I remember the, the wedding actually right there in the temple. And I see it actually that they did a lot of, they gave a lot of support to my mother and everyone actually was happy actually having this wedding going on.
Después de esa boda, este, eh, unos meses después o unos años después, mi mamá se había divorciado, en ese, eh, se había divorciado con el muchacho. Y ese divorcio causó que yo y mi mamá nos salieran de la iglesia. Y cuando yo escuché esas noticias que decíamos a salir, eh, mi corazón se quebró y, y yo sentía que yo tenía un gran peso en mi cuerpo que yo no, no podía vivir sin el amor de, y el amor de la iglesia que, que ya nos daba. Y cuando yo me salí de la iglesia sentía que yo ya no quería nada de más con Dios porque sentía que mi vida ya no tenía como una razón.
After that, my mother got divorced with this person actually and we got out of the, that church. And after that, actually, I felt very empty inside of me because actually when we were out of the churches and, and, and I actually feeling terrible, pretty much actually I didn't want nothing to do, learning about God or, I feel like something failed me.
Two more minutes.
Este, después que yo me salí de la iglesia, yo buscaba otras iglesias en Chelsea, in Everett, in Rivera, in Lynn. Y ni una de esas iglesias pudo llenar mi corazón de amor y paz como la iglesia del pastor Sánchez porque yo creo que en la iglesia el pastor, eh, ellos tienen una visión de amor y ellos quieren lo más, lo más mejor para todos, aunque sean niños, jóvenes, o gente mayor de edad. Ellos, lo que ellos quieren es dar un amor para que ellos puedan seguir más de Dios.
Then after that, started a business, some other churches around Chelsea. And, uh, went there and I couldn't find actually what I was looking for. After that, I went to the Pastor Sanchez Church. I found actually they, uh, you receive unconditional love in that place actually. It's something that actually that, uh, it make you feel good and, and put everything you get in when you go to Pastor Sanchez's church.
Okay, could finish up, okay?
En mi opinión, yo pienso que la iglesia del pastor Sánchez, eh, es como una perspectiva de, de amor y de paz y que sin Dios no se puede encontrar nada del mundo. Este, yo creo que si ustedes nos dan este viene podemos, eh, cambiar muchas vidas que no han conocido de Dios y que algún día ellos puedan ver, eh, la iglesia y el Señor les puede tocar el corazón para que entren y que sus vidas pueden ser cambiadas.
Yeah, like I was saying, the Pastor Sanchez, you receive unconditional love. And I think actually, uh, if you'd allow that this happened, uh, a lot of people are gonna be able to come and receive all this help and actually be able to receive God and, and fulfill the, what they're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, I really appreciate the time that you're taking for us.
I need your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Vicente Cabrera. I live right now in two eighty-five Chelsea Street in Everett. It's across the border from Chelsea, is the, across the, uh, C there. So we buy, the people from Everett, Adelitimi, we buy other market basket. So we from here, we practically here in Chelsea. I came here from the Dominican Republic is in two thousand, eh, two. And I came here to Chelsea, I live in Corres Street, Turos Street, eighty-five, Turos Street, seventy-five, SS Street. I live in Corres Street, seventy-five, and now I live across. So all my life I've been here in Chelsea. I love this city. And you see, I consider myself a African. But my people, my father, my mother are Dominican and I born there, so I, I am Dominican. But my color cannot lie. I love Chelsea, uh, I love America because they're inclusive. I love my color, I love my, eh, language, it's Spanish. Yo hablo español, gracias a Dios. O sea, also, uh, my, my father was white, my grandfather has the green eyes. So, but in this place, I came from the Dominican Republic and you know people that we drink, since we born. I came here with wrong in my blood. So I have an ass beating, I have a wrong way going in, I got arrested for DUI. But then after that, I, something was wrong, I was without child, without car, without money, without home, without food, without nothing. But I found this church. In, yeah, and in two thousand fifteen, I got married at that church. One thirty-four Ferry Street in Everett. Thanks God, my wife is here, is Lorena. Can you stand up, please, my wife?
You better stand up.
I'm very proud, I'm very proud. Because now her and I, we working in this ministry. My pastor, the whole church heard me to get married and get my feet on it. So I never been arrested again because I haven't drank again. Since two thousand six, I drive for Uber, I, I found life at that church. Also, I got cancer, my tarot was removed. But when I was during the process of cancer, I went to the pastor to pray for me. It's something that everybody need to know around here in Chelsea, in Massachusetts. The God has a person here, it's a miracle. Every, anyone sick here, he can pray for you, he can heal you. In the name of God, we have a Moses here. That's what it is, that the people see here and the blessing that we having, having this pastor here and this church is something that you cannot leave it go. Cannot let it go, I'm fifty-nine years old. And I'm having, we leading, my wife and I, a family pray in Dorchester. One twelve Adams Street in Dorchester, we bring every week and we saving family, taking people from out of the street and teaching them how to be safe from violence, how to be safe from drugs, how to be safe from killing. We need more churches like this around the world. We need this church here in Jersey. God bless you all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I use my phone to read what I wrote?
You certainly may. But first by saying your name and address.
Okay, my name is Alicia Romero. Um, I live in sixty-nine Gardiner Street in Lynn. Um, I just wanted to start straight over, straightforward that building a community where people feel safe and separate ourselves from the dangers of the world is better than getting used to the dangers that's already happening. I feel safer in an area where it is more open and less crowded. I used to think that these people were weird until these people helped me gain confidence, helped me learn how to trust and helped me learn how to love, even myself when I didn't even know how to. If you had a choice to have a small place or a big place, you would obviously choose a big place because it felt more better, just in general. I used to live in a small place, especially having divorced parents and having three siblings and now another little sister, Belaine, who's now one years old. When I'm at my house all the time, I feel lost because I don't know how to spend my time with myself. Because I'm so used to being alone and having no one to understand me because of course I am my own person. But when I am at home, and I mean at church, they provide safety, they make me feel loved and they help me and my father gain a relationship and move on from the problems or issues we used to have. I, like I said, had serious issues, daddy issues and anger issues. I used to take my anger out on people and especially my siblings. But because of what I learned, I feel like I'm a brand new person, but I'm still learning because it is a process, but it has continued to help me. The place where we are at in the moment is near a liquor store. And I have seen kids who are young and close to my age go into the store and get alcohol. You wouldn't want any kid going into the store, even your nieces or even your cousins who are young. According to deaths from excessive alcohol use in the United States CDC, about one hundred seventy-eight thousand people die from excessive alcohol use in the U.S. each year. Furthermore, I witnessed a man who was consumed from drugs or alcohol being unconscious in front of the bus stop while I was visiting my uncle near the fire department here in Chelsea. I used to think if I tried weed, it would be a good way to become cool and popular and I wanted to try it. But there is a kid in my school addicted to it and unfortunately his mind hasn't worked properly as it used to. And I realized I could have been him if I took the weed, all because I didn't love myself and all because I wanted more friends and popularity. There are a lot of girls too buying vape and using it and I can't even go into the bathroom while they're vaping because they're addicted to it. Even with the rules at the school, they don't care because it's trending, it's popular, it's something that we're becoming used to. I feel safer in church than at school, anyone else, anywhere else, especially how this generation is. So I really hope you take it into consideration. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you.
Can I, uh?
You go, what, do you want to take a break?
No, no, I want, I have a couple more questions.
Of whom? You have questions, well, let's lift, let's conversation finish first. Go.
My name is Haley Sanchez, I live in one seventy-three Shute Street in Everett.
Could you speak up just a little bit, please?
Haley Sanchez, one seventy-three Shute Street, I am her, his daughter. I have seen this church grow, I've obviously been there since the beginning. My dad converted to be a Christian a few years before I was born. He's been a pastor for over thirteen years. And I have seen the struggle my parents have been through, my mom is currently not here, but the struggle they have been through to build this church. I have been a Christian my whole life. I have been through my own processes and church and my dad as his, the pastor has helped me through so many things. There's so many youth here that, um, we have helped as they have talked about it. It's just been such a hard process, seeing how much this world has, is just getting worse and worse every minute. And for me, I'm honestly scared of Chelsea, if I'm gonna be very honest. But if God is putting us in this place, it's because he has a purpose for this place, um, for the city. And my dad, all he ever wants to do and he cries and he's on his knees and I see the tears and sweat he throws into this church for people to grow, for them to be better. And it's not just about drugs, it's not just about alcoholism, or, um, people being depressed. It's also people having their struggles where they need help and we're there to help them. I mean, there's so many like liquor stores, there's so many drug stores around the places that, oh, the only reason they're there is just to kill people. They're not actually there to help them. And us having a church, us wanting to build a place to help people and to be better, it won't be open. And we are just here to hope so many people get better, to have salvation, to have lives where they could, we, they could like tell their story, where we got them out of. Like, we work with Everett, a lot of people know my parents, both in Everett, we're well-known because we have helped so many youth. I go to Everett High School. And so many people are like, thanks to your dad, thanks to your church, is that I have changed and I'm better. It's not about going to therapy or going to these other places where you guys think they're gonna help and giving them medications. It's literally about actually building a, a relationship with God. And I would know that because I'm eighteen years old and I have seen changes in people and this church is gonna help this community, it's gonna help Chelsea, and I hope it's gonna better Chelsea. And I hope that it's just gonna help everyone else. As a youth, as someone that goes to high school, I just see everybody being so addicted to all these things that don't help you for nothing. And we're here to help. I have seen, like I said once and over again, the sweat and tears these, my parents have been through to go through this. We have had this building for over, like about what, three years or more? And we're still fighting to get a permit and I hope that you guys could really, like, see where we're all coming from, see where we wanna help. Because if we, like, if we have helped Everett, I believe we could help Chelsea be better too. And I believe that we could help youth and adults and everyone around us that need help. We're here to help our community, we're here, we're here to help New England and all the United States. Because we don't just wanna help this place, we don't wanna just restore these families, but we wanna help the world and we wanna be better for everyone. And we want people to know who Jesus is, who, where he has gotten all of us out of. And I'm a big testimony in this place. And, um, I just wanna see places get better. Because like I said, it's so sad to see where the world is going now with the drugs and the alcohol and everything, the depression, how youth are killing themselves. But there's so many here that we have helped and why can't we help more? Just give us an opportunity to open this church and let us prove everyone wrong about how much we could actually help the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chelsea City Councilor Todd Taylor, forty-five Nichols Street. Let me first start by saying, my initial reservations with this project lay, I thought that the, uh, the fire department may have some, some issues with the, the interior parking and, and, and this kind of thing. Apparently not. And I can say that we live in Chelsea. I was a member of the planning board before I was on the city council. You know, I know about how often, I mean, we don't really wanna change the zoning laws so we make every, everything come through the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. So until we, until we do that, we have to issue special permits. I do not have any opposition to this project. If I had people calling me up and saying, we don't want this in our neighborhood, I would come here and say that, just like I came before you before on a previous project uh, and, and spoke against it. I think a lot of people didn't wanna see a church go in here because we wouldn't get a lot of tax revenue and, you know, something like this. But let me tell you, you all heard these people tonight. You heard how this church has impacted their lives. I got into public service because I wanted to get, give back to people and make their lives better. You heard what it is. You know, being a city councilor, I'm on the, I'm on all the texts with the chief of police and all the other leaders in our, in our city. When some, when something goes wrong, when somebody gets shot or when something, you know, there's a drug overdose and somebody dies or there's a, there's a fire and people are displaced. We have a lot of negative stuff that comes with the world today. I don't care that much about the money. We're sitting on twenty million dollars of free cash, okay? This is something value added. We could use an injection of goodness, of positivity into the community. We could use an injection of goodness, of positivity into the community. I live in this neighborhood, you know, there's, you know, there's stuff that goes on in our neighborhood that, that, that shouldn't. I think the police do a, a very good job, but, you know, they're always working hard at it. But it's not just, you know, it's, it's, it's not just the supply side, it's the demand side too that I think, um, these guys can help with. I met with the pastor and his team, um, I got his vision, sat with him, talked with him, and, uh, you know, I think that as long as the special permits, if you think that they are, are within reason, um, that's up to you. But I think that, I think that this particular thing is something that we need now, and we're gonna need even more in the future, because things are not getting better, they are gonna get worse. And I guarantee you that. So it's up to you guys, that's my two cents as, as the residing city councilor. But, uh, thank you for your, for your time and listening, and thank you, everybody, for sharing everything tonight.
Thank you. Now, now guys, this is not gonna be the only chance, you're gonna have to speak on this if you want. You can, but this has to go to the planning board, which again is on March twenty-sixth, and you guys can show up there too. Um, and then it comes back here on the fourth of April, yep, ninth of April, sorry, the ninth of April. And that's when we'll have the opportunity to decide. Thank you all so much for everything you've said, it was moving, it was, it was orderly, bit more orderly than I've ever seen with a group this large. Do you wanna speak, sir? Please come right ahead. I didn't mean to cut you out.
No, it's all fine, it, it, you know, we've definitely sat through a couple stories. So my name is Manuel Tesche, I am the, uh, I live at 188 Broadway. I'm the city councilor for District Seven. The reason why I mention that is because there's huge significance behind it. In 2014, I started attending this, this man right here, his church. He was my pastor, he still is. I started attending because I also felt, you know, a lot of thoughts coming into my head, I felt like I was losing my way. I would ride my bicycle from Chelsea all the way to Everett to his church. His impact was so great that it set me on a path to which now I am able to serve as a city councilor in Chelsea. Those are years of work that all sprouted out from having conversations with him. Let's not forget the fact that, you know, we're talking about something so simple like parking. Parking that has been already met in terms of numbers. The only issues that are, that we are facing right now are the little practicalities with it. But there are enough parkings in this church to fit the requirement. We should be able to act on this as soon as we can, we already heard that he has been waiting for three years now. Three years that that church could have been opened, three years worth of people that could have been helped. I think we should all gather together and make sure we're fighting to act as soon as we can and as fast as we can to be able to provide the resources for our city. As a city councilor, I've been working to make sure that we provide guidelines and support and all the efforts that we can to make sure we help our, our youth. I myself was one of the youths, youths at risk, and we've seen a lot today. And so I wanna make sure that, again, we, we take advantage of the time that we have and that we make this happen as soon as we can, so that more youth in Chelsea can be engaged. And the sooner, the better. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Hugo, did you have a question that you said, did you have a question with the pastor?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so we will see anybody here who wants to be back on the fourth, the ninth of April. And if you have any comments, go to this, here, the planning department, the planning board on the twenty-sixth. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's right, that's. You want a break? Do I, do you need a break, break, or?
If you could please move out, the board has other here, other cases to hear.
So the next.
I mean, you're welcome to sit and watch the other cases, but if you don't linger.
But you can't stand up.
The board has other work to do, so.
Six, the next one in front of us is sixty-five Harvard Street, Alcino Gaspar Netto and Ca- Catherine Reyes. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four oh one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, this is for special permit seeking approval for off-street parking, which does not meet the requirement of being within five feet from the side yard property line nor in the required front yard setback. So I'm gonna do two things here. I'm gonna ask you to tell us what you proposed, and then I'm gonna ask us first to tell us what you've already done without a permit. So why don't we start with you telling us what you've done without a permit, and then ask us what you're proposing?
So, um.
Your name and address, please.
Okay, um, Alcino Gaspar Neto, sixty-five Harvard Street, Chelsea. So, um, over here, um, we, let me.
You can, you can pick that one up.
Okay, so I wanna do something over here, so we have a parking spot, that section. So I wanna do, keep that side, because they have a stair over here and a walk, walkway too over here. So I wanna do parking spot, one, uh, two cars, uh, but I think it's fit three. Because I don't wanna cut the, the curb cut over here, the cut, the, the curb.
Well, is there a curb cut there now?
Yeah, no, it's not.
No, okay.
Uh, the city hall, somebody digging over there right now, because we don't have the shut-off for my water. So they, they destroyed the sidewalk, not me, I can improve. Uh, the only thing we did over here is the retaining wall over here, retaining wall over here, and the, the porch, I have a permit for the porch. So we demoed the porch and waited until we got the approval from you guys.
Well, but you did that without having approval from our end, when you should have had approval to do that. Any of the stuff that you've done already required a permit, correct?
No, the.
Yes, it did.
Yes, it did.
And you were told it did, so.
So, no, 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 no. We did over there, I spoke with the, the guy, uh. Uh, Ros.
So is that what you've already done in your front yard?
Yeah, yeah, that one is the retaining wall.
And do you think that you didn't need a permit to do that?
Somebody told me three feet not, because we, if you're not doing any asphalt or something, we don't need a permit for this, we need a permit for asphalt, we need a permit for, uh, digging on a.
Who told you that?
This, the guys on the, on, uh, the, Ross, yeah, Ross.
Do you have anything in writing?
Sorry?
Do you have anything in writing to substantiate your claim?
No, no.
John, is that accurate or no?
But the plan you presented, you presented to the board, which is on the right, shows a retaining wall, shows three retaining walls and three parking spaces. It was part of the plan you presented to the board as to get your parking permits. So the work you did was without a permit.
Yeah, I mean, you were asking for those permits, and then you did it without. So it's, it's just kinda hard, because you know, you want, you're asking for us to do something for you when in fact it's kinda hard, because you didn't really act in good faith. You didn't, you, you should have waited, you knew we were gonna, you would kinda come in front of us, but you did it anyway. So that's a little, it's a little disconcerting from my perspective.
Yeah, like, um, I, I understand, I agree what you're talking about, uh, but, uh, if you wanna do whatever I have to do.
You wait for a permit.
Exactly, and that's why I'm waiting for three months.
Well, you know something, that's what happens.
No, no, exactly, but I'm here too, waiting for the permit. I don't wanna finish, I don't wanna waiting, I wanna, uh, the guy.
But you, you were supposed to be here last month and it got canceled because of snow, but you'd already done work on it by then.
Yeah, I did the, I did the work over there, I take like, um, um, three feet, because we only did the retaining wall around.
But you weren't supposed to do the retaining wall until you got a permit.
Yeah, I did.
That's what you were asking for, but you did it anyway. I mean, I mean, what part of that, I'm, I'm not understanding how.
I, I, like, I'm not, I'm not a contractor, I'm not like, uh.
No, but you filed a permit and you knew you needed one.
No, exactly, exactly, so I come over here a few times, I apply for the permit, uh, I'm waiting for the permit, uh, if, if I'm doing whatever I have to do over here, I'm finishing the project, right? But I, I never did this.
Well, you applied for a permit, but then you went and did it without having a permit.
Yeah, we just started, we just started the retaining wall.
You just started the retaining wall without a permit.
Okay, all right, so, so, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's a question that we're, we have in front of us to figure out. Because, well, first of all, we're not gonna be deciding this today, because this has to go to the planning board. You put us in an incredible, well, I don't know about us, I can't speak to that. You put me in a difficult position, because, you know, some people make mistakes, and then some people say, "Well, the heck with you, I'm gonna do whatever I want." And I got the impression that that's what you said versus, geez, I made a mistake and then I stopped. We've had people make mistakes, and then they stop until they get their permit.
Well, we got permits for everything else, you think we was just not.
Do we, do they have permits for everything else, John?
We come, we fully renovated that house with the permit.
But where it's not in front of us, that's irrelevant, that's not.
After you were given a cease and desist, because you did not get the permits for it. But that's irrelevant to the zone.
Right, that's not relevant, it, it, it speaks to a behavior, but it's not relevant to the, what we're talking about here. We are deciding this, and you're, you're in front of us saying, "I want, I need this, I need a special permit." You want a favor from us, is what you're basically asking. We, you by right have no right to do anything that you're doing, the law says no. You have to come in front of the planning, in the front of the zoning board of appeals and get approval. And so you're asking us to do a favor. So, you know, we could put conditions on this, suppose we approve it and put conditions on us. You've made it clear you don't pay attention to what you're supposed to do, so that puts me in a weird position of whether or not I can trust you to do what you're gonna do. But anyway, I am talking too much and I apologize to my board, so, um, this, they, they want two retaining wall, John, go ahead.
I'd just like to point out that not only did you build the retaining wall, you didn't build it according to the plan you presented to the board.
Is, is, I built the same thing on, I, I.
That, the plan on the right, the retaining wall and the layout of the, uh, law on the right does not match what you put in the field already.
Where, here? That, that's the only thing.
No.
Yeah, can you show me?
Let me go back to the photos.
Yes.
Uh, I gotta find it again, sorry. No, here we go, photos.
Oh, there they were.
Your, your plans show a retaining wall all the way to the, from the back all the way to this retaining wall. You now have stairs there. Your plans also show a retaining wall all the way across, that there's now a, um. It's, it's, it's missing a portion so you can get access to the basement.
Sorry, but if you go to the plan, you can see.
And your plans also show that this retaining wall was to be six feet from that, a budding, that butt out there, but it's only about three feet.
Okay, can, can you open the plan again? Let's see, what do you have it?
Gotta find it again.
All right, so that's the sta, that's the old one? That's the proposal, that's the stair?
But this.
But you see the retaining wall behind the stairs?
The stairs do not, I see this plan, the stairs end at the, at the house. It does not extend all the way to the retaining wall, and there's no disruption of the wall for those stairs. Here, it says six, I can't read it, about six feet, and I measured it, it's only about three feet. So it, not only did you build it, but you didn't build it according to the plan you were, you told the board you were gonna build it to.
Okay, so.
So he also removed the old porch? He also removed the old porch on the existing plan?
I, I can't, I can't do, um, a forty.
My, my question is, that porch, it shows in existing plan, it's no longer there.
Oh, no, it's, it's still there, but when you make, we make stairs over there, we have a permit for this.
You don't have a permit.
For, for the decking, as we do.
For, for the porch, they may have a permit. But not according to the plan on the right, which is what they showed, is what they, what they had proposed to build.
Uh-huh, I mean, that, I mean.
It's not built that way.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things we require, when you submit plans, the plans have to match what you actually do. And that's, so what we're hearing is that they're not quite, and you know, and we'll often work with that if people, well, we won't work with that, because that means the work's already done. But, um, anyway, uh, any other thoughts or questions on this?
A question. What is your end plan after you've built this?
I wanna, um, make a more spot for, um, my house, you know? We have a three-family, so we don't have a parking spot. So it is very, very difficult to get permits in Chelsea. Yeah, but, um. We, we got removal, we got ticket every day, it is a hundred, no, three hundred dollars every six months to, to put my stickers on my cars. I have like a thousand dollars I can approve you guys to, like, in tickets. I come over here, I talk to the ladies, they, they doesn't have a patience, they kick me out, they call the security, I have a videos, they, they said, you know, you have to come over here after February twenty-eighth, because you have to pay three hundred dollars again for a permit for one month. So it is not easy to me, I come over here, you know, um, I spent around sixty thousand dollars to do this. Like, I'm very, the, uh, the desperate, you know, like, I'm, you're desperate, because I need, I need a help, and I come over here, uh, I know that's not your guys' problem, the city hall problem about this note the last time. But we have a car, car stolen, we have, uh, we have a daughter as well, we have to park in a car like four minutes from my house, you know? And I'm vest money, I'm not here to, to play a game, you know? And your guys are pointing fingers to me, but I, of course, I, I, I know if I cut over here and put one spot of the, of my house, it is only a privilege, uh, a privilege to me, because we only have one parking lot, it is a ten thousand dollars I can do this. But I spent six, sixty thousand dollars to put a, a feet, three cars over there, and we lost one parking spot where we put the three cars inside of my house, you know? So we don't have a problem to, it's no removal, we don't have a problem for, uh, uh, trash, because we put a spot for trash over there, so I don't know.
You know, we have nothing to do with the curb cut, we can't, even, we, we don't approve curb cuts, just so you know.
But I come over here for curb cut.
So even if the board approves this, you still have to go to DPW to get the curb cut?
We don't do curb cuts.
Yeah.
Yeah, but would somebody have to approve the curb cut?
All right, just so you know.
Yeah, so Russell, he told me this, Neto got the permit for the porch, go talk to the, John, John? John, on the basement, tell him you need the curb, curb cut over there, because you need the curb cut over there. Uh, he told me, uh, after three feet, you need a permit, but if you put a, a retaining wall in the waiting until the approval, it is asphalt, or you need something to drain on a, on a front, I don't know, on the front of your garage, but we spent twenty thousand, thirty thousand for the. but we spend twenty thousand, thirty thousand for the, the drainage, or you can appeal, and you put the paver, um, absorb the water, and we don't have to put the drainage. And that's, I, I did, that's I did. You know, if, if the city hall, like, every, Russell called me and said, "Naro," I receive every day a calls from the neighbors. If, if I receive, he stopped by every day when the neighbors call, and then he said, "Naro, I can't do nothing over here, you can keep working." He told me like this. You can keep working, because if, if, if I'm working wrong with no permit, he put the stop work on my side.
So, John, I think, um, well, we're not gonna obviously decide this more, but clearly, if, if he was given bad information, then we need to know that. No, I'll, I'm just saying you need to ask somebody if he was told, somebody of an authority, that he was told that he could continue.
I can, I can ask the building inspector, but-
Yeah, you-
Please speak into the microphone.
You gotta speak into the microphone, give your name and address, please.
I was just wondering if the-
Name and address.
Catherine Reeves, sixty-five Harvard Street, Chelsea, sorry. Um, I'm just wondering if, you know, there's anywhere that we can see like that type of rule, that if it's built, you know, uh, below si- uh, three feet, if that's possible to be okay, or-
That, that's a building code issue, it's not a zoning code issue. So building code is building department.
Oh, okay.
So it's not zoning, they don't regulate three feet or, you know, digging out the three feet or whatever.
Okay, so I, I guess it's a miscommunication, even though I know, I'm sure you guys believe that we, we're doing wrong, but it's a miscommunication if we were told that below three feet, it will be okay, and now we're not. Is that right?
The board is not saying that you built it to three feet, they're saying that you, you built it without getting their permit first, and then did not build it according to the plan you told the board you were gonna build it to.
I guess what I mean is, if we were told that building within three feet, it's okay to do it without a permit, I don't, I just, I'm confused with this commu- miscommunication, because is that a rule, is that a rule that exists? If, if we build below three feet, does that require a permit?
Okay. One, it's a building code issue, two, it doesn't seem to make sense that building below, above one foot is not, but building, building three feet below is, that is, that is something I'll address with the building department.
But the, but the reality is, whatever the size of the wall was, y- your plan was for us to tell you you could put it there. I think that's, that's the issue. You were coming in front of us saying, "Where can we put this wall?" We wanna park, and in order to park, we wanna build parking, we need to, we wanna protect our area, we wanna, we wanna, we want a wall here, we want a wall here, we want whatever the heck we want, we want three parking spaces here. I mean, that's what people come in front of us all the time to do. So it's, we don't, you know, we don't say it's three feet, two feet, that, you know, we have to follow the law, but our requirement is to say, in order for you to build parking, these are the requirements you have, and there, that means there needs to be a retaining wall here or a retaining wall there. So you, I don't know anything about three feet, one feet, whatever, you know, but what I do know is that the plan, when we're asked to look at parking, we talk about what supports that parking, what special permit, what requirements do we put on a special permit that enable you to have the privilege of having parking? That's, and that, and we want a plan that shows us that, and the plan is supposed to be consistent. And let me tell you, we've sent a lot of people back when their plans don't make sense, and it's not, it doesn't have to be a driveway, it can be some big development, it doesn't make sense, go back, do it again, submit it, the way you're telling me you want it to be. So, you know, that's, we, because by law, how can we approve it if it doesn't match? You know, that's gonna become part of the record, and the record is, you, what you filed and we approved, doesn't match what you built. So, that's not gonna make sense, in the, in, you know, when you look at property records, when you look at anything. That, we're not asking this to be obstreperous, or asking, or asking it, because that's our responsibility.
I understand, so, um-
No, I have a, I have a question. We need a permit for, uh, pavers?
I'm sorry, I can't hear what you're saying.
Pavement, permit for pavement.
We need a permit for paver sidewalks?
It's a question, do we need a-
A question.
You know, from a zoning perspective, no.
But we need a permit for the retaining wall?
You could put pavers, I tell you, the planning board's gonna ask you to put permeable pavers there.
Uh-huh.
Uh, but you could put asphalt there. So, to pave it for parking, yes, you do.
Okay, so we not pave here over there?
Yeah, yeah.
But we need a permit for the retaining wall, three feet?
That's a building code issue.
So, alright, so, it's not affectable here too, guys, alright? So, what else I did wrong? Because the parking spot is still the same spot, the same size, everything. The only thing I did, somebody told me, we can keep doing the retaining wall, and wait until you guys give the permission to do the pavers on the driveway, and I never did the pavers, because you guys not allowed, we put the pavers here.
Are you, are you still putting up the cones in front, so that you can park there at night?
So I actually have something to say about this, cuz we, we didn't put-
If you stop by-
One per- one person to talk to.
Excuse me, excuse me. Not listen to the board, please.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, the only thing, the cone is not mine.
I withdraw the question, cuz it's not related to zoning.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I, sorry, I just wanna interrupt all this, cuz I did come here, um, and I, I think, I just went through the other side, but, um, to, um, oh, I forgot the word, but, cuz we got a ticket for that, and we didn't put the cones there. There's a sign-
Chairs and sign on the cones.
There's signs, it, it wasn't us. There's date from date, from different dates.
We don't-
It's not relevant to the-
It's not, we can't, okay, here's the deal, this is gonna plant, this is gonna planning depart- board anyway on three twenty, I'm gonna open it to the public in a minute, what?
I think at a minimum, you need a new plan showing-
Well, that's what I was supposed to say, but, but before you come next month, your plan has to match what you're doing, what you want to do. We can't, the plan in front of you now does not match what you're doing. So at a minimum, we need a plan that matches what you're doing. So we can't approve anything if what you're proposing, or what you've already done, doesn't match what you have in the plan. So you, you know, you, we're not gonna, we can't decide this today, by law, we can't decide this in any case today. It has to go to the planning department, a planning board, upon the twenty-sixth of March, and then it's back, you're back here on the ninth of April. But when you come back on the ninth of April, well, you probably want it for the planning department, planning board too, is that, that plan has to match what you've done or wanna do. It just has to, it has to coincide. And we can't make a decision in any case if they don't coincide. So, you need to do that, but I'm gonna open this up to the public. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this?
Could you, could you please put the microphone?
Give her the microphone, please?
Oh, yeah.
Thank, no problem, thank you.
Hello, everybody, um, I just wanted to add-
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry, Elaine Flynn, and I live at sixty-six Harvard Street. I'm directly, diagonally opposite number sixty-five. And, and, and I first wanna commend you on the job you've done. You took on a difficult property, it was a big challenge, and you've done a nice job. I wish you the wet, the best with that, I hope it finishes up as well as it's begun.
Thank you, right.
But, uh, nonetheless, I wanna clarify a little bit, I think there's some confusion as to, you know, kinda what this is about. I had a letter that was in, at the city clerk's package, and it said, it's a letter to Alcino Gaspar Neto, and it was from the-
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
It was from the, um, Michael McAtier, from the building department. And it was, uh, sent on December twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-three. And the letter says, "To whom it may concern, this office has completed its review of your application to create a curb cut and off-street parking at the above referenced location. And we find as follows, pursuant to section thirty-four dash one oh six of the City of Chelsea zoning ordinance, which states that parking of a vehicle is not permitted within five feet from a side yard property line, nor in the required front yard setback. Your proposed location fails to nee- meet both of the aforementioned requirements. Therefore, your application has been denied, and your proposed driveway may not be lawfully constructed unless the zoning board of appeals waives the requirements and grants a special permit from the dimensional and parking requirements listed above. So that it's much more than just a three-foot retaining wall, it's-
And, you know, ma'am, you just basically made our case, because they were told in December to not do anything until they got approval of the zoning board.
That's what I'm saying.
And that's, but they did it anyway. So, anyway, again, it's not that me, we may have approved it, who knows? But right now, what, you knew in December that you weren't supposed to do it, they told you to get, come to the plan, the zoning board, and it's March, and it's done. So, yeah, your front yard's been done, so, worked on.
I think just things needs to be in writing, because we get told some things, and, and now- No, that's not the writing, because I came in after this letter to ask what to do next, cuz otherwise I wouldn't be here.
Well, you knew enough, at some point, you filed something with the, you were told to talk to the, the ZBA, that's what that says. Make a petition to the ZB, I'm not gonna get into a debate with you, anyway, so, um, that's what it said, and that's what you've done. But, go ahead, I'm gonna continue, ma'am.
Um, I don't know if you wanna continue, I have some other thoughts that maybe are appropriate here, or maybe at the, the next meeting.
Whichever you, it's, it's your decision.
I guess I'd like to give you my thoughts, I put together, uh, a little package and, and some photos.
Okay, we'll take those as part of the record.
Thank you.
And, um, as I said, I'm Elaine Flynn, I live at sixty-six Harvard Street. Uh, I own the property there, and I'm a, a longtime resident, uh, of the neighborhood.
Yeah, well, I thought you just said you live at sixty-six-
Harvard.
Harvard.
That's correct.
I thought you said cottage, I'm sorry.
Sorry, and, um, I'm a longtime resident, and I know that Prattville is a, a safe, quiet residential neighborhood. It is a prized location within the City of Chelsea. The immediate Harvard Street neighborhood where sixty-five is located was originally developed in the late eighteen hundreds and the early nineteen hundreds with large spacious single-family dwellings. Two of which, number sixty-three and number sixty-five, were constructed by members of the Pratt family. Approximately half of the dwellings on this part of Harvard Street continue to be used as single families. Others have converted, been converted for use as two, three, or four-family dwellings. Two were raised in nineteen eighty, and an apartment building was cr- constructed on the site. All of the single-family dwellings on this part of Harvard Street have off-street parking. Most of the multifamily dwellings have off-street parking. The apartment building has a large parking lot at the rear of the building for the residents. As a result, this part of Harvard Street, on street, on this part of Harvard Street, on-street parking is always readily available for the neighborhood residents and their guests. I have included some photos that show the available street parking.
Talk into the microphone, please.
I, I've included some photos for you, and I recommend that you go to Harvard Street and view the parking as well, if you haven't already. Um, the other thing that I, you know, has been, been an ongoing issue, the photos show the orange barrels and cones that have stretched across the front of Harvard, sixty-five Harvard, for more than a month. And residents are discouraged from parking, because it's unknown what the, what the cones mean. A sign on the barrel indicates that they are the city, they're the property of the City of Chelsea Department of Public Works. Often, one barrel is placed on the street, preventing anyone from parking there, and assuring that the tenant, or maybe it's the owner, I don't know who it is, who now parks his vehicle in the front yard at sixty hi- five Harvard Street, is able to go over the curb to enter and exit the front yard. And you have to follow the path. It gives-
Talk into the microphone, please.
The, the barrels give the impression that the DPW has concluded that parking in the front yard of sixty-five Harvard Street is allowed, despite the determination of the Director of the Department of Inspection Services that it is not permitted, as I said, pursuant to section thirty-four one oh six of the Chelsea zoning board, zoning ordinance. Um, I wonder, does the DPW have the authority to disregard the zoning ordinance and, and dismiss Director McAtier's determination?
That's, we're not as- answering questions, we're just listening to your testimony.
I'm, I'm opposed, I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to granting a special permit to allow a curb cut and parking in the front yard at sixty-five Harvard. Given the ample available on-street parking, there's just no need to issue a, a special permit for a curb cut and a parking in the front yard. As well as, there's no need for ta- for, for the tenant at sixty-five Harvard to drive over the curb to fr- to park in the front yard. Unless the vehicle is not registered and insured in the City of Chelsea, and as a result, is unable to obtain a resident parking sticker. I'm opposed to granting the, uh, request the special permit. There's just no good reason to grant the special permit when there's ample on-street parking. Furthermore, there's no good reason for the zoning board of appeals to enable circumvention of the rules and regulations of the Massachusetts Registry of Motor Vehicles. The special permit gives no benefit to the residents of the neighborhood, only harm. The appeal of the neighborhood will be diminished and forever changed for no good reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this? Name and address, please. Ma'am, let the, let the gentleman speak up.
Good evening, my name's Adam Vanyo, I live at seventy Fremont, here in Chelsea. And so your property diagonally from the back, uh, I am on the corner, in the back of you up the hill. So I see all the work you're doing, and I know the house was in really bad shape when you bought it, and I was so glad to see that somebody bought it and did a lot of work, so I commend you for that. I have no problem with you, uh, if, if the city allows the curb cut, whatever the case may be, cuz as was stated-
Why don't you address us as opposed to-
I'm sorry, thank you. Uh, I have no problem with the proposed curb cut and the work that they're doing, it certainly has impressed the house and built the house up. Then, obviously, there's some issues here that need to be worked out with you guys and other departments. Uh, I'm just, as a neighbor who butts them in a diagonal way up the back, that I have no problem with what they're doing. I hear what everyone's saying about, you know, uh, Harvard Street apparently is accommodating enough cars that can park there, so with this proposed curb cut, I have no problem with that, since apparently from neighbors that said that there is no issue with parking on that street anyway, so if, whatever curb cut they're going to make is gonna take away, in theory, a, a parking area for somebody, it's already been established from local residents that it's okay as far as parking is in that area. I'm just here to give my support that, you know, as long as they follow whatever's going on, and if they have to straighten out the plans, that's no problem with me. I'm just, because I was given a letter, I just wanna come here and offer my support, and, uh, I hope to talk to you guys more in the future.
Sure.
Uh, and, uh, that's all I have to say, I just wanna come and say that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else, you, question, you go?
Um, what is the distance from the retaining wall to the, um, first, uh, parking space?
Oops, yep, you need your microphone.
To that, the, the-
No, no, on the proposal plan, the retaining wall was a distance, was, um-
Yeah, it's easier to use that.
Alright, so here, it's still the same thing was before, because here they have a gas line, and the city hall they dig, so we have, uh, eight feet. And they have stairs over here to go on this side. Over here, all the way here, it is, um, sidewalk, alright, so we keep the same, because here they have a gas line, and the city hall totally damaged that side to for, tried to put shut off for the water, but they dig all the street, all the sidewalk, they leave a cones, big cones circle over there, and right now they blaming me, I put cones over there.
Okay, but from the retaining wall, right, um, yes, to the, um, to the parking, what's the distance?
Oh, okay, it's a four, uh, fifty-
Say for the edge, when the parking style, those lines, let, my question is, when you park, when you, let's say you got this approved, you park, you have the two cars that park. Parking spot number one or car number one will be able to make that turn to get out of the parking space.
Yes, yes, so here, um, we put six feet, but we need eighteen minimum, so, uh, when we talked to the guys, they, they doing sidewalks and, uh, retaining wall, they told me like this- me like this, Nato, if you take three feet from here, we can put three cars for this way, all right, for this way, not this way, and we don't have a problem to turn, because this curb cut is supposed to be here, so we can just go this way, or this way, or this way, and park in the car. I agree, I think we have to give a new plans and the new, like, ideas with the parking this way and show three feet over here. That's the only change with that, because the sidewalks keep going this way anyway. So I will talk to my engineer to make three feet in the design, three parking lot, for guys can understand better, because here's only two car spaces. I think it's not enough if we lose one parking spot over there.
Are you planning to live at this property?
Yes.
Are you planning to condominium the property?
No, no. I, I have one lady, she'll live on the second floor for twenty years, twenty or twenty-five, and we bought the house for four months. City Hall paid, City Hall, or, yeah, I think City Hall, the government paid for the rent. We never increased. We tried to help her because she has a, it's, it's not condo, it's not condo, it's keep the, a, a, a mooch family. I don't want to sell the property, I want to stay on the property, you know? My brothers live there, so the second floor, I have a lady, she has one son, he has a, he has handicap, so I tried to help her. I saw she parking the car on the neighborhood sometimes because we don't have parking spot. So it is very hard, we, we saw people parking like a half mile away and come with bags from market, no, that's, I think it's not fair. She has a seventy, seventy years old.
I would say if you get home at four PM, absolutely, you can find enough parking spot. But once six PM hits, you cannot find it. And like she said, you can perfectly drive by and you'll be able to see there was no parking spot after six, seven PM. So I, we, all, everyone works, I'm not able to get home before everyone gets home. So that's the whole point of it. I'm not gonna, you know, ask for a permit, spend a ton of money just because I want a driveway. And I, I don't know, it's just, there is not enough parking.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this? Okay, so you guys got to go in front of the planning board on the twenty-sixth of March?
With an updated plan.
With an updated plan, and then back to us on the ninth of April, okay?
Okay, so last question. So just, we just come with a new plan, and what's the next step? We come over here on?
Come with, no, come with a new plan, make sure you file it, John, talk with John tomorrow or whatever, to figure out what the timing should be on that plan, because I'm not gonna, you know, when they should get it, what kind of time he needs, so I don't, you know, John, I'm sorry to put you on the, on the hook for that. But give John a call tomorrow and figure out when the timing on the plan should be, and talk to your engineer or whatever to figure out when you can get it done. Because I mean, it's, it needs, we, the planning board won't give you a recommendation, so they, they recommend to us whether or not they want to approve it or not approve it. They won't give us that recommendation if they don't have a plan that they know what they're recommending. So they need the new plan that they would recommend to us, and then we go, so we need the new plan too. But if you don't have the new plan for them to look at, it's, you know, it just makes things confusing for them. So we need, we need to hear from them.
So, and what's the, the next day?
April nine. Twenty-sixth of March.
Twenty-sixth and then April nine.
And then back here on April nine, correct.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next case is sixty-three Harvard Street, just next door, twenty-two-four oh three. Sergio Saint Laurent. For a special permit in variance seeking approval to establish additional living space by constructing basement habitable, habitable space, relocating a rear egress addition, building a second floor addition, and porch and extending an existing driveway which does not meet the minimum requirements for combined side yard setback, minimum rear yard setback, and proposed parking extension within five feet of side yard property line and within five feet of a wall containing windows, and also tandem parking spaces are subject to special permit approval. Couple things. One, we won't be deciding this today, because it's a special permit. You're also looking for a variance. Make sure you understand the four conditions for meeting a variance. You should talk to John about that, because in order for us to prove it, to approve it, you have to meet all four of the conditions. And that's, we can't, we have no control over that. A variance, so if you have to meet all four conditions for a variance, if you want it.
We're supposed, Sergio Saint Laurent, sixty-three Harvard Street.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
So go ahead, tell us what you're proposing, please.
So the proposed, the proposed idea is additional living space in the basement. Right now, there's, you know, the washing and drying machines out there, and the reason behind this is because now my mother has seen herself in, you know, health issues and stupor voices and all these things, so it's, in a sense, getting ahead of her health. So just to make sure that the house is suitable if anything happens.
Now, John, we had some concerns that the plans were not clear.
Yes, may I?
Yes.
Okay. So your proposal says that there will be, not only that you will be doing this, but you'll also be building a second floor addition and porch, but there is no plans showing a second floor addition or porch. It shows basement and it shows first floor, but doesn't show anything on the second floor.
I apologize for my understanding, it was included in there, but I make sure that it gets, you know, provided. I said, for my understanding, I thought that it was included with the plans that were submitted, so I apologize for that.
So, this is the basement proposed. This is the first floor proposed, and that's it, there is no second floor. So are you saying that you're not making any changes to the second floor?
So the second floor does have the proposed porch, which is to use of the space that the stairs that are going to get removed, being placed off. So yes, there will be a porch in the second floor.
Do you need amended plans?
So the boards need, the boards need that plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And then this floor plan shows on the first floor is that this is, the first part here is not being touched, but what is, are there bedrooms there?
No, so that is the living room, if I may, I'll show you.
Yes, please.
Okay, so this is living room, dining room, family room, and then this is the kitchen as is.
So, so there's no bedrooms on that first floor?
No, sir.
I'm sorry, this is a single-family house?
Yes.
Oh, so the bedrooms are upstairs?
Yes.
How many bedrooms upstairs?
On the second floor, there are three.
Three, and then you're putting three more?
And then, yes.
That's a lot of it.
Yes. It's a lot, yes. On the top floor, there are two, one of them which is my bedroom, and the other one's closet space. And then in the second floor, there are a lot of bedrooms, but my mother has had difficulty going upstairs. So in building downstairs, we're seeking for her to be better able to go on her own self.
Your mom is the only one leaving, who's gonna leave downstairs in the basement?
What was that again?
Your mom is the only one who's gonna leave in the basement?
Well, no, I'm assuming things will get rearranged as it, you know, goes by. I said, I said, as of now, I, no, we're not gonna leave mom in the basement.
But, but building three bedrooms raises questions, that's a lot. So you're basically saying you want a single-family home with seven bedrooms?
Well, I mean, where I live in the third floor, it used to be, I guess, the family room, and downstairs, basement, that was the idea as well. I now have a three-year-old niece, having a playground for her down there as well, a live for office space, it could be multiple uses, it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, a bedroom.
But seven bedrooms is a lot in a one home, one home.
I, I agree, yes.
Are you, are you having two bathrooms in the basement?
One, I think, one.
One?
And a wet bar.
Are you, well, I, let me tell, let's not futz around. The question here is whether or not you're trying to make an apartment on the bottom floor. Because if you're trying to make an apartment on the bottom floor, then that's something you need to tell us. You know, if you're gonna put a kitchen, or you're gonna put, you know, if you're gonna make another apartment, then that's something we need to know, and the plans need to reflect that, so we can properly evaluate the proposal.
And I can see where the question comes from. The house is not getting divided. It is a place so that a person can find everything there without having to possibly have to move multiple stairs up.
But if you put a kitchen, if you're putting a kitchen, you know, putting a bathroom is one thing.
Yeah.
Putting a kitchen implies that it's a separate facility. Does it not, John?
Yes. We thought of the kitchen as a kitchenette, not necessarily a full kitchen.
It's a kitchenette is a kitchen, don't, don't parse words.
But, I, honestly, that's.
Is it gonna have a stove, a refrigerator, or in someplace, yeah, that's our kitchen. It's a long day.
Yeah, I mean, we've been here together, yes. But to, yes, I agree, it does, it does have all the assets of an apartment itself, but again, this is for in-family. This is for us.
Then one family needs one kitchen. My grandmother's house had two, I admit, but that's what old Italian people did, so, but.
But also, the space itself is not, you know, this is not a, I mean, when we sat down and designed this, it wasn't to go and cook downstairs. It's never been what we thought of. We just decided to put one for accessibility, and that's it.
Right, but that's, that's, okay, but that just sounds like an apartment. Do you have a question, you go?
Yeah, so how many stairs, is there only one stairs going down from the back of the house?
Yes, I mean, there are two exits, but the difference between the stairs from the first floor into the basement are, well, there are ten, whereas to go from first floor into second floor, there are twenty, so it's twice as many.
Is there access to the basement through, is that the only way is to go, is it, it's completely underground?
Uh, no, so the access from the basement is from the back, well, this will be where the parking spaces, so this will be an exit, and then we access it obviously from our kitchen down directly.
Okay. Any other questions before I open it up?
You mentioned there, your mother has limited capacity. Are you looking just basically to get housing for her? And sometimes, I have some friends, their mother or mother-in-law, they, they just add on a bedroom. But if she has limited capacity, does she have limited capacity in that, can she make meals for herself?
Oh, she can, yeah, no, she is fully functional, but progressively, she is getting many more pains, and sometimes she has to be bedrest for a day or two. And I know that it happened to the Mitchells as well, the family that was there before. The house got too big for them, and that's, you know, they're not longer there, and we love the place, and we obviously want to stay.
You said you had a washer and a dryer?
In the basement?
In the basement?
Yeah.
Where that's gonna go?
What's that?
On this plan, where is that going?
Is this the basement of the first floor?
And this is the basement.
Oh, proposed basement, yeah.
Do you, honest, I don't see it there. I think it might be getting relocated to the first floor, I'm not sure, maybe on the side?
So you're gonna be submitting revised plans anyway, so why don't you make sure that you look into what you go with saying? Because we don't have second floor plans, so you're gonna need to be submitting revised ones. So see, figure out where the washer and dryer goes.
Absolutely.
And, and I don't know, again, I'm just speaking for myself, but the impression that there was a kitchen downstairs is problematic for me.
I second that one.
Joe, John, do you have any other questions before I open up to the public?
I do not.
Again, this is not the only opportunity, some will have. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this?
Again, Adam Vanyo, seventy Fremont Avenue. Sergio is right behind me. That's the letter, and why I'm here. I'd be curious to see what the second floor is, I'm very curious about my view. First off, I can see the city from my house, I'm higher than Sergio is. I have to say, you know, I haven't talked to Sergio lately, but he's done a very good job on the property, and your family has, and I'm impressed with that. I do have a couple issues about the driveway.
Talk to us.
That we need to talk about. Yeah, the way, because my property is much higher, and there's only a half a retaining wall, and the other half is where I have an old deck which is partially collapsing into their driveway. So that is an issue that I believe needs to be addressed as far as my view on things, that's something that needs to be completed or looked into as part of getting this driveway situation. That this retaining wall, it butts my property, goes all the way down the back of my property and his property, it is washing away into their driveway. So that's an issue, where my deck is about nine feet above where their driveway is right now, because they dug out, and they're kind of below grade of my retaining wall and my deck. And so that issue to me is very concerning, that I'd be willing to work with them to address that and correct that. So that's a concern, because they mentioned the driveway.
Thank you.
And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. So you have to go in front of the planning board on the twenty-sixth of March. They're gonna want to see the plans.
Okay.
And then back here on the, on April ninth.
April nine.
So double-check with John tomorrow about when plans should be submitted, but we would, we want to see the revised plans that address the things we've raised here today, as well as the second floor.
Absolutely.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one, twenty-two-three oh five, four forty Broadway, Cosway Development LLC requests for extension of a variance, it's better be quick.
I hope so too. My name is Dave Tregorth, fifty Summer Street in Boston. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm just seeking a, an extension on our variance for four forty Broadway, the former Salvation Army building right downtown. We were here last summer, decisions were recorded in June, and we're looking forward to getting underway, I would say, late summer, early fall. It's gonna be twenty-eight residential condominiums, all affordable. Fourteen will be at eighty percent AMI, fourteen will be at a hundred percent AMI. There'll be nineteen parking spaces underneath the building. There's no changes to the building in terms of the makeup or program.
So the only thing you're asking for is a six-month extension?
Exactly.
And John, they're entitled to one six-month extension, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that the extension is given.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for waiting. Last but not least, we need to talk about the.
Well, there's, one more was the Maverick Street roof deck, but they're not here.
Oh.
So, do you want to continue to next month?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, continue that. So the, we need to also approve the, the regulations for consultants that were sent to us earlier. Did people have the opportunity to look at those? I had a few comments. I'll share with you my comments just quickly. There's, and they're more editorial than they are anything else, but there's also one that's substantive. The editorial comment is that we go back and forth between seeing zoning board of appeals and board of appeals. I suggested to John that it continually say zoning board of appeals, since it's just one thing. The other thing that I was concerned about, if that's the right word, it says like, for example, under notice, the zoning board shall give a written notice. Well, we don't give, that, that implies running around, getting the signatures of all the people. I would recommend that we instead authorize an agent or our, what, an agent or our representative.
Designee.
Or designee to be able to sign or ask for that kind of stuff, because it, we don't do that, and we don't, that's the way, saying the zoning board of appeals shall give written notice means he has to run around, get all of our, our signatures before he can do anything.
Or wait an additional month.
Yeah.
To get the signatures, process everything, and pay the consultants.
Yeah, which seems impractical to me, since that, you know, that's not what we do now, you know, you send, send recommendations. So I, so I, those were the two, I had one, you know, form recommendation, but one substantive one, which we would allow, you know, and all the other question I had, John, from a technical point of view, is do we need to des- designate who our agent shall be on this? Should it say, or do we have to vote on an agent? So should we basically say, the agent shall, at this point, shall be delegated to be the chair of the planning department?
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, I think that we might want to just say that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because otherwise, again, we would have to take out an affirmative action each time we're recognizing an agent...
Yeah.
To do that, and, and again, I think that's a waste of time, since we know who that's going to be, so I would recommend that we make that change to identify that the agent who shall be...
The director of permitting and land use planning?
Yes.
Okay.
So those were my thoughts. Any others, for my big mouth here? Any other, yeah?
Well, I did have a question. It says approved February thirteen twenty-four.
That was the draft.
Is that was the draft?
It's a draft, and that was the date I was originally gonna bring it to you, but that meeting was canceled because of the snow, well, because of the no-snow storm.
So, so do we vote now to approve them based on the changes we just, okay, so do I have a motion to approve these draft regulations based on the proposed changes just articulated?
A question, and this goes in effect when?
Today.
As soon as you voted.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? You go, if you're gonna have a problem with it, tell us now, because otherwise we can't vote on it. Because we need four people, and if we're not gonna do that, then I would rather wait until the next meeting.
No, this is just regulations, you just need a simple majority.
Just a simple majority, okay, then we don't...
I, I didn't fully read it, and...
So...
I...
So Joe, under the state law, the board has the authority to require applicants to pay for a peer review if the city adopts Section forty-four or Section fifty-three. The city did adopt it many years ago when it first passed, and I do believe I brought this to the board back then, but I don't have a record of it, so I just want to make sure. So the intent here is to give the board the authority to request the funds from the applicant in order to pay for a peer review. You have a very large development coming up that will need peer reviewer services, it's coming up in May, and that's the energy storage facility, and they, they recognize that and they're willing to participate in, but in order to...
But in order for them to participate, they have to have a legal requirement.
Right.
Okay, okay.
So that's why, that's why I'm bringing it to you now.
And my question is, as I was reading, you know, I first made comments, and then they were, they were recognized in the second part, the payment of the fee recognized that if there's a fee paid but more money was required, it's a position, and there's also the fact that if money is unspent, it was returned to them.
Everything gets returned to them, yes, with interest.
With interest, so that addressed my concern.
So the applicant would be the payer?
Talk to the microphone, please.
Yeah. The Conservation Commission adopted these regulations at their meeting in, on February twenty-second.
Saying that, because we had such a snowstorm that day.
And the planning board, unfortunately, the planning board did not meet last night because I neglected to post the agenda in time, so they'll be meeting on the twenty-sixth, and this will be brought to them as well.
So do we have a motion based on those recommendations?
I make a motion.
And seconded, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
And we have lots of seconds on that, all in favor, hallelujah. Bye, Ricky.
Thank you.